Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this full council meeting. I now invite the mayor's chaplain to leave in prayers. Thank you, please be seated. Now for the preliminary items. Apologies for absence.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening councillors, we have no apologies this evening.
Declarations of interest.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. May I inquire whether any members wish to declare any interests in respect of any of the items on tonight's agenda, please? There are none, Madam Mayor.
Have I the council's permission to sign the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of January 2025? Thank you, Chief Executive. Are there any communications?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Are there any deputations or petitions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
We have seven questions submitted for this evening's meeting, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I remind members that any supplementary questions must arise directly out of the original question or reply? Question number one to councillor, from councillor Paul Gleeson to councillor Andorian. Councillor Gleeson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There has been significant commentary in the news and on social media regarding the council's decision to adjust members' remuneration to lie more closely with allowances paid to members in other councils locally and nationally. Do you, as leader of the council, have any comments or statement to make to update us on this issue?
Councillor Dorian, would you like to respond to this question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Gleeson for notice of his question. The decision taken by the council follows the first review of council allowances since 2022. Most other councils have increased their allowances since then, some multiple times. For tax purposes, council members and civic dignitaries are treated in the same way as any other individual who holds an office or is an employee. Allowances received are liable for income tax reductions. At council, an amendment to the recommendations of the independent remuneration panel was proposed by the leader of the opposition, councillor Stephen Woodliffe, and it was seconded by councillor Peter Bedford and approved following a vote. The cost of the increase that was approved is equivalent of less than half a pence per day per resident, a worthwhile investment that I believe offers excellent value, given the level of responsibility and complexity that now comes with being an elected councillor. The new allowances mean that the council can continue to draw on a wider talent pool from the local area, making the role more accessible to more people. Being a councillor is a great honour and privilege. It is only right that people from all walks of life, backgrounds and experiences have the opportunity to bring their skills and knowledge to the role to help their community. By offering a fair amount, we hope to encourage a range of voices, not just those who are comfortably in a position to sacrifice time and money. The public duty of being a councillor is one that comes with great responsibility and commitment. Councillors give up many hours to support local residents, attend meetings and make important decisions that impact people's lives. My week on council business is usually between 50 to 60 hours. All councillors I know seek to do the best they can for the ward they represent and the wider borough. I truly believe that Boston councillors will now receive an allowance that properly reflects the tremendous responsibility we all have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gleeson, do you have a supplementary question?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I think at this point, I would like to publicly state that as civic leaders, the deputy mayor and I abstained from voting regarding the increase in allowances. Thank you, members. And we now have a question to councillor Callum Butler from councillor Stuart Evans. Councillor Evans?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Community Skips trial in town, announced and then implemented in August, September and November of 2024, said that following the pilot, we will review the results. Subject to what those results show, a permanent regular service could be introduced with the potential to bring community skips to other areas of Boston and our villages. I understand the portfolio holder has been given a final report. When can we expect to see the trial results? And when will we have some dates for the implementation of the trials in the rural areas of Bicker, Swainshead Old Lake, Curtin, Fishtoft and other rural villages in our borough?
Councillor Butler, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank councillor Evans for notice of his question. I am very pleased to say that there has been an overall reduction of flytipping in Boston Borough in the last 10 months. I have reviewed the evaluation of the community skip scheme, and it is likely that, along with our targeted engagement and enviro crime work, this has contributed to this reduction. Subject to the overall cost of implementing a more permanent service being justifiable, we will endeavour to extend the reach of the community skips to the parishes within the wider borough of Boston. A briefing note is being drafted for cabinet with proposals and costs for such a wider scheme. Thank you.
Councillor Evans, do you have a supplementary question?
No supplementary question for this one because my next question is related, Madam Mayor.
Question to councillor Callum Butler from councillor Stuart Evans.
Okay, thank you. May I also ask what expectations the borough has of the forthcoming trials in these villages compared to the Boston Town Trials? May I remind you of the BBC statement which said, "The council believes the programme is a positive step when it comes to keeping the borough's streets cleaner, as well as we are taking a proactive approach, trying something different to see if that has a positive impact." Do you agree that more areas trialled may see a more positive impact?
Councillor Butler, would you like to respond?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and thank you again councillor Evans for notice of your question. I am committed to trying different initiatives to keep the borough streets cleaner, and I would expect residents to make good use of the skips where provided in villages. In relation to more trials having a positive impact, yes, which is why, subject to costing, we are hoping to roll out a borough-wide scheme as set out earlier. Thank you.
Councillor Evans, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that positive response. On the matter of cost, it could be argued that if there is money available for increased allowances, then there is money available for important projects like this one. Do you not agree?
Councillor Butler, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that we need to be careful with the budgets that we have, and we will review it, and we will see where we go. At the end of the day, it will be a cabinet decision. I'm hopeful that it will be approved, which, as I've said previously, the figures have been positive for the last 10 to 12 months. So I can't see any reason why not, but again, it all comes down to cost. Thank you.
Question number four. To councillor Andorian from councillor Clare Rylott. Thank you, councillor Rylott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, at January's full council meeting, the independent remuneration panel were invited to share their report and recommendations to full council with regards to a review of councillors' allowances, which was proposed to commence from April 2025. Members had asked the independent remuneration panel to carry out this piece of work. It was a fair review, bringing allowances in line with the other two councils we work closely with. Full council accepted an amendment to the report, the costs being way above and beyond what the IRP recommended. Not only that, but the amendment also included backdating allowances, increases to, sorry, allowance increases to April 2024. The amendment gives you a 49% allowance increase, and you will receive £16,000 in back pay. Without the back pay, the extra cost of the amendment over the IRP proposal is £55,597. We are all aware by 2028, Boston Borough Council will have disappeared, and councillors have been accused of milking the system while it is there. What is your view on the decision taken?
Councillor Dorian, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Rylott for notice of her question. With regard to my view on the decision taken, I will refer you to my statement, which is published on the council's website and which I've actually just read out as response to another question on the same topic. Your claim that you have been accused of milking the system can be easily refuted by the fact that full council took the decision about the allowances on the 20th of January 2025, but the letter from the minister inviting this council to submit proposals for local government reorganisation did not arrive until the 5th of February 2025. Up to the point of receiving the letter, there were absolutely no guarantees that the government would indeed follow through with previously whispered proposals because Sir Keir Starmer has been known to flip-flop on other decisions. I do not recognise the figure of £16,000 that you've quoted here, and in actual fact, it is far from the truth. I think it's unacceptable for councillors to engage in feeding disinformation into the public domain. You should be aware of the extreme levels of vitriol and abuse that I received when the decision was taken, and it is harmful for you to introduce false information into the public discourse. You should also be aware that one of the reasons cited for recommending the increase in allowances was to encourage a more diverse field of candidates, making the role of councillor more accessible to more people. A recent study by King's College London found that online harassment, abuse and intimidation directed at politicians is on the rise, and that female politicians face such behaviour more often than their male counterparts. Worse still, they report that this kind of hostility can deter women from remaining in politics and discourages those who haven't run for office from considering it. I would urge you then, councillor Rylott, to think very carefully before making comments which have the potential to cause a maltreatment of others. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rylott, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, your group took control in 2023 with a majority 18-12, to be exact. I am only a group of five and have little to say, little say in decisions made by Boston Borough Council. You have the majority and are therefore able to do whatever you wish. You may have given Boston a Christmas tree. That was the biggest mistake the Conservatives made in the eyes of the residents. Another thing the Tories never did was award themselves a 49% allowance increase. The anger and dismay from the residents of Boston has damaged all councillors' reputations, as we are now seen to be doing this role for any one reason. Allowances should not be considered as a direct payment of working. If you, if you think it should, you are in this role for the wrong reason. Since last full council, your personal comments regarding other fellow councillors and workers were not at all professional. Councillor Campwell did approach all members and asked if they would revisit the allowances matter. Only six said they would support this. He needed 10 to reopen the matter within six months' period.
I'm just going to interrupt here, this should be a question.
On reflection of the harms done to this council, will you encourage members, you have the majority, to reconsider the amendment made and accept the recommendation made by the independent remuneration panel with no backdating?
Councillor Dorian, do you wish to respond?
I'll respond. You say you have little say in the decisions made in this council. Can I suggest, councillor Rylott, that if you turned up to a meeting once in a while, turned up to a briefing once in a while, you would have far more say in the decisions that are made, but you're absent, it seems, more often than you're actually here. No, I will not ask my group to reconsider the decision made. You're picking at a scab, hoping that it will bleed once more. You do nothing to further the cause of this council, of which you remember, but you do everything you can to discredit it, and shame on you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Question number five. Councillor Andorian again from councillor Clare Rylott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, I understand over the last few months you have been invited to attend meetings regarding the creation of a mayoral combined authority board. Would you please give full council an update on those meetings that you have attended?
Dorian, do you wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Rylott for notice of her question. The district joint committee has now met twice. On the first occasion, four named nominations were made for the mayoral combined county authority. At the second meeting, it was agreed that the district joint committee would be a formal nominating body for the MCC. We still await confirmation from the MCC to allow us to make further appointments. As leaders, we met to discuss the composition of the new committee, and myself, councillor Ashley Baxter from South Castriven, councillor Trevor Young from West Lindsay, took great care to express the importance of having fair representation on this new board. We reminded the other leaders that at the district council elections in May 2023, the residents of Lincolnshire removed three Conservative-run councils and replaced them with two independent administrations and one Lib Dem administration. We also reminded our leader colleagues that the tally of councillors in the whole county was as follows. Independent councillors, 115. Conservative councillors, 114. Labour have 33, and the Lib Dems have only 29. All of this was to no avail, and it became apparent that a deal had been struck behind closed doors, and the Tory leaders swept three seats and Labour took the remaining seats, thereby leaving us completely without representation. Given that the three upper tier councils are run by the Conservative Party, it is highly probable that the six constituent members of the new Greater Lincolnshire Mayoral Combined Authority will be Tories, thus making it extremely important that the non constituency seats were allocated in a way which represents the political configuration of the county. We failed to get an acceptable outcome, but in making the decision they have, I believe the others have shot themselves in the foot. My group here in Boston is furious, and I know those feelings are shared by the councillors in West Lindsay and South Castriven. It was Theresa May who commented that people saw the Conservatives as the nasty party, and this type of behaviour shows me that things haven't really changed. It is my hope that folk will remember that. They cannot trust the red team or the blue team when they go to the polls in May. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rylott, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, do you not think it would have been more suitable to send a factory worker to the meetings you have attended? Does that would have had the stamina to stay to the end, not walk out before a meeting has concluded?
Councillor Dorian, I don't see that was a question, but would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you're quite right. We're just playing into political tropes now, aren't we? You're demeaning factory workers, you're trying to insult me. Knock yourself out, Clare. I hope you're enjoying yourself. We are still in control. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Question number six, councillor And, to councillor Andorian from councillor Clare Rylott. Thank you, councillor Rylott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, South East Links Council partnership is made up of Boston Borough Council, East Lindsay District Council and South Holland District Council. The aim of the partnership was to live, to deliver growth and regeneration to the area, to seek greater access and vital government funding, and to find a position where it can identify and secure new investment into the subregion, which is often viewed as being left behind for these transformative sums of money. Transformative, sorry, sums of money. As leader of this council, do you have a good working relationship with the other two partnership council leaders?
Dorian, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank councillor Rylott for notice of her question. As with all my political relationships, I base them on the Nolan principles, particularly when it comes to honesty, integrity and openness. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rylott, do you have a supplementary question?
Surprise, surprise, I do. Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Leader, can you confirm to council that you have withdrawn all car parking and access cards at BBC to ELDC executives and why?
Councillor Dorian, would you like to respond?
Yes, I can confirm that I have withdrawn car parking spaces and access passes from elected members at East Lindsay District Council and South Holland District Council, and that by booking through Alison Hull when they come here for meetings, they can have access to the building, they can have a daily pass, and they can have a car parking space reserved for them. All that was communicated, but well done. You've really managed to lower the tone tonight, Clare. Well done.
Question number seven to councillor Andorian from councillor Anton Dani. Thank you, councillor Dani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very pleased to see that the Rosegarth project is underway. I'm pretty sure that once it will be finished, it will add a better landscape to Boston. Such schemes can enhance the look and the reputation of our much-loved town. Madam Leader, would you please tell us if there, there have been any applications submitted or will be forwarded by our council regarding any funds to the government for similar plans or designs? Thank you.
Councillor Dorian, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Dani, for notice of your question. I too am inspired by the fantastic development we are leading at Rosegarth Square. Our levelling up funding, together with our ongoing partnership with NHS, stands to totally transform that area, creating real value for our community and local businesses and delivering visible transformational change. Whilst the current, sorry, whilst the current government has not opened up any new funding schemes at the financial scale of the Levelling Up Fund or the Towns Fund, we are actively planning how to maximise the 10-year, £20 million endowment fund we are negotiating under the Long Term Plan for Towns, and we will seize upon any opportunity to secure resources into our borough that create value for our communities, both at the large scale but also at smaller scales. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Councillor Dani, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's more like I just to thank Madam Leader for the response. All I can say is that I wish our council a good luck in the future in attempts for gaining any other funds or any levelling up, and I will say sizing up on any opportunities is the way to go forward. But thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dani. Councillor Dorian, do you wish to respond in any way?
Well, I'd just like to thank councillor Dani sincerely for your good wishes. You and I don't often meet in the middle, see eye to eye, but I accept your sincere good wishes in the manner in which you have extended them. Thank you.
Are there any questions from members of the public, the chief executive?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Part two of the agenda, the, we shall now move on to the agenda items for this evening. The first part being the Audit and Governance Committee minutes, which states, sorry, which starts on page 41 of the agenda. Can I ask councillor Peer Point to present the minutes? Thank you, councillor Peer Point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to present these minutes of the Audit and Governance Committee meeting for noting just a couple of issues I'd just like to raise on page 14 of the minutes. I just want to mention that the engagement director from KPMG advised that a lot of positive assurance could be taken by the committee on the status of the organisation now and going forward to the future. A very positive note. A very positive note. The other second positive note was from the internal auditor, saying the performance dashboard was 80% completed, internal audit plans had been delivered, and he commented on good progress. There have been 100% feedback response from the officers on all audits with positive feedback, as I said, and the recent audits showed limited insurance reports on various issues that was raised. And I also just like to say that the two new lay members that we have taken on to the panel have been exceptionally good, and those on the committee would obviously, I think, agree with me. They're very forthcoming, they're very good at asking the right questions, they understand all the papers, and they're credit to my committee. The minutes are for noting, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Peer Point. The draft minutes are for the council to note only. Does anyone wish to speak on the draft minutes? If everyone is content, we will move to the next item. The second item on tonight's agenda is the annual budget report, 2025-26 Medium Term Financial Strategy, Capital Programme and Annual Strategy, Treasury Management Policy and the Annual Delivery Plan, which starts on page 23 of the agenda. Can I ask councillor Gauch to introduce this report? Councillor Gauch, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear colleagues, this is my third budget presentation from when I took the responsibility as finance portfolio lead, and I wish to submit a quick report card before I formally present the budget report. Before we took over as the leading group in the financial year 2223, there was a budget gap of £282,000 with no proactive plans to achieve those efficiencies. In the financial year 2324, I inherited a £664,000 budget gap. So there was a dire need for a planned approach. So we set out a plan to implement an efficiency target before every budget and act on it religiously. For 2425, we have already achieved 78% by Q2. We have paid back nearly all of the debt taken by the previous administration. All direct rates have been informed to make budgets on the basis of past historical data, hence reducing mid-years pro forma Bs, avoiding unplanned mid-year pressure on the budget. A cultural change has taken place in this area. More efficient way of working for all the services has been encouraged. This is working closely within the SELCP partnership to achieve more financial benefits. The special interest group created and led by our administration has resulted in getting £5 million for this financial year, which is £2 million more than last year. As a cabinet, we have seeked to drive improvement in our town and have been focused on supporting the vulnerable during a very challenging period. Our investment in procurement expertise is reaping rewards now. We are engaging more effectively with communities and businesses in terms of our plans. And last but not least, to the point, easily readable yearly and quarterly financial reports with accurate details. Every year since I have become financial portfolio holder, there have been challenges, and this year is no different. But with a different spotlight driven not from worldwide events, as previously we have seen, but from government and through policy changes. This means that we are receiving significantly less government support than in previous years with the removal of the Rural Services Delivery Grant. Further significant changes are planned for the coming year in terms of business rates and more changes to future year settlements. Plus devolution and local government reorganisation, so there can be no doubt there will be challenges ahead. Developing this budget for 2526 and MTFS looking forward to 2930 has been time-consuming and difficult. A particular document I would draw to member attention is the enhanced section 25 statement at the end of appendix one, setting out the risks within the budget and contingencies in some detail. IDB continue to be an ever-increasing pressure with an increase for 2526 of £102,000 included in this report, which equates to a 45% increase since 2122. I must mention the extensive work the SELCP partnership has led in lobbying government to address this key and critical issue for budget and which we led on establishing in October 22. This so desperately needs to be resolved in a way that supports IDBs to do the job they do so well whilst taking this unfair and inequitable charge out of our revenue account. I am pleased that the government has listened to what the SIG have said and increased the national sum to £5 million, but this is only a third of the increase that councils have seen since 2122. We have had to include an efficiency target in the budget since 2223 as a result of the legacy left by the previous administration and government funding changes, plus the impact of the IDB levy that we have seen over this period. This unfortunately is unavoidable. The general savings target for 2526 will be £510,000, and the IDB-related target is £913,000. There is no doubt this will be challenging. To address this, we have identified a multi-year efficiency plan with offices looking to the short and medium term. The leader is working with myself and the 151 to oversee this work, to ensure we achieve the efficiencies and opportunities we have identified. 38.25 million of existing savings our partnership with East Lindsay and South Holland is on target to deliver the projected £42 million of savings identified in the business case earlier than anticipated. I would also like to add that in this budget, we are specifically focusing on supporting our town centre with lower rents for our markets and making provisions for member grounds to help support our local communities. And so to the budget report, agenda pack 23, Ross General Fund expenditure of £50.89 million has been budgeted for 2526. You can see in detail in table 10. With a net budget of £13.2 million, the general fund budget includes a general efficiency target.
Can I just stop you there? You have actually gone over five minutes. Councillor, are you happy for him to continue with the report? Yes. Great, thank you, thank you. Carry on, councillor.
The general fund budget includes a general efficiency target of £510,000 for the year and £913,000 in respect of the IDBs. The general fund capital programme for 2526 is £33.3 million. With regard to the government settlement on 3rd February 25, the main points of which are the cessation of the services grant and rural services delivery grant, a new recovery grant with a shift away from using measures relating to rurality to those relating to deprivation. New home bonus is continuing for one more year. Proposals are expected to be consulted on ending the scheme in its current format. A focus on evidence-based policy using the best available economic and statistical techniques along with the latest reliable data, and a plan for a multi-year settlement looking forward. A budget consultation process with the public and business was undertaken, and the results are attached to this report. The budget proposals were subject to review by both the corporate and community committee on 23rd Jan 25 and the Audit and Governance Committee 27th of Jan 25, who particularly focused on budget risks. Regarding the income, the return on cash investment reflects recent decreases to Bank of England base rates, which are reducing slower than previously anticipated. A meeting of the MPC on 5th of February 25 reduced rates to 4.5%. Investment income and property fund income continues to be very important for the council since the base rates have continued at higher levels than in previous years. The property fund continued with steady performance, although capital values have dropped, and as previously reported, at some length, the changes to regulations regarding accounting arrangements are now making this less attractive to hold. Regarding council tax and business rates, the previous medium-term financial strategy committed to a council tax increase in line with maximum allowed under the recent local government settlement. For Boston Borough Council in 2526, this is a £7.56 per annum increase for band D properties. This will generate additional income of £151,000, and the increase is reflected throughout the life of the MTFS. This equates to £14.5 per week for a band D property and £0.09 for a band A. 81.6% of Boston Borough Council properties are band A to C. The national non-domestic rates from production is now particularly important for the reasons set out in the report. Regarding the capital programme, the capital programme included in appendix one, totaling a significant £47.8 million over five years, and is probably one of the most extensive this council has ever seen, reflecting a huge investment in our place, the likes of which has not been seen before. The council's capital strategy is attached at appendix two and focuses on the core principles of capital investment. Regarding the treasury management, also attached is the council treasury management policy 2526, appendix 4A, and treasury management strategy including the minimum revenue provision policy and annual investment strategy 2526, appendix 4B. And our reserves, turning to our reserves, table 12, page 56 of our agenda pack, shows the retention of a reasonable reserves position. In summary, this budget presents a balanced and positive picture despite challenging circumstances and appropriately meets the issues we face whilst maximising grant income to invest in local assets to the benefit of our communities. Madam Mayor, I now propose that the council approves recommendation 1 to 11 of the 2526 annual budget report, MTFS strategy, capital programme and capital strategy, treasury management policy statement and annual delivery plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gauch, and thank you councillors for allowing him to continue. Is there a second there? And if there is, would you like to reserve the right to speak? Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to second that and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Gleeson, thank you, and councillor Rylot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This always seems very dry, lots of figures, lots of words. But in many council chambers across the country, they are facing enormous holes in their budget, which we don't see. So, since I've been re-elected, our debt's gone down from 60-odd million to one. We're managing to keep council tax increase within what is allowed. We're not going to government asking for 15%. And we've managed to deliver, over the last two years, in my opinion, a much better town centre and borough. We've seen some really good events organised. So not only have we managed to control the budget, meet the shortfall, we've managed actually to improve the life of the borough, and hopefully in the long term that will pay off and people will start coming back in. So, we've got to, yes, this is all very good, you've done really well, so that's fine. But you've really done very well, and that needs to be reflected in the way people look at the work the council is doing. Because we're not in the dire straits, we're not cutting left, right and centre. There are councils facing hundreds of millions of pounds worth of costs. I accept the bigger councils, that's it. We had a £400 million, we wouldn't, anyway. This is so important, though, we recognise the work we are doing. And it's hard, you know, to do that, because it does look, it's all dry here, you know, it's just numbers. But those numbers are important. We are struggling with the IDBs. Looking at our budget, who was our part of the council act, more than half of that now just goes straight to the IDB. You know, our increase this year, we won't see a penny of. So, you've done well, and I think that needs recognising. So.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. Councillor Rylot, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, may I commend the leader in the cabinet in reducing the cost of hiring market stalls in Boston? As many of you are aware, this was a subject matter to a recent E&amp;P meeting. Concerns were raised by members over our charges compared to the other two sister councils. I think this shows that the cabinet have recognised and do listen to scrutiny committees, which I'm delighted to see. I will not be supporting the budget. We are aware that the Internal Drainage Board levies are an ever-increasing pressure to the council, the levy rising yet again for 2526 to very necessary cost. But monies from the allowance increase would have covered that cost.
Any further speakers? I think councillor Pryke, you were first, and then councillor, councillor, and then councillor Rodden. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to speak about internal drainage boards and the point we have on page 27. This time last year, the figures in front of us then were looking fairly apocalyptic because of the increases in the levies from the IDBs. I represent Boston Borough Council on Welland and Deepings IDB, and I can't speak for the other IDBs. Our members on them can say whatever they want. We know, and this council knows, that the huge increases in the levies in the past few years from the IDBs have largely arisen because of the increase in fuel costs, particularly electricity, diesel and all the rest of it, largely as a result of the Russian invasion of Ukraine and cutting off supplies to Europe of so many fuels that we had relatively cheaply. But also post-Covid reaction, as the economy has got back on its feet again. And that has affected all councils and all businesses. But it's particularly affected the IDBs because they are so energy-intensive. They need that power to pump the water out, basically. And there is no getting away from it, because if they don't, we're all going to be paddling, and might be a bit worse than that. Now, I'd like to reassure council and the people of Boston that Welland and Deepings IDB is doing its level best to keep their costs down.
Madam Mayor, can I just step in to assist councillor Pryke? This evening, you do need to speak as a borough council, not as a member of a drainage board, please.
Yes, but I wanted to point out that I know that the IDB has done its best to reduce costs to us and to its ratepayers. And I acknowledge that the land-owning ratepayers pay a lot more to the IDBs than the council. But the work is being done, and it's moving forward. I was pleased that councillor Gauch mentioned the relatively recent announcement there'll be more money for councils to deal with IDB levies, which isn't in this report. I assume it came out after this report was drafted. But there will be additional money coming to help in the future. I welcome the budget as a whole, and I welcome the work, especially the Sigoma work between the various councils to deal with this problem. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Pryke, I think councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with deep regret that I cannot support this budget, which lots of hard work from the officers has gone into, and I think particularly Christine, who we're sad to be losing. Producing market rents, a generous council tax support scheme, and reinstating council support grants were sound and correct decisions to make. However, underlying this was the bonkers decision last fall council to increase allowances and backdate this to last April. I was at the audit and governance meeting where the section 151 officer ran through increasing nearly all our financial risks. through increasing nearly all our financial risks. As the government cuts grants and the IDB pressures mount, we decided to spend roughly £113,000 on ourselves. More damning than this, Madam Mayor, is the officers worked damn hard to achieve those savings and this chamber decides to waste our taxpayers' money. The estimated IDB increases is £102,000 this year. Why did we not choose to fund this instead? I am sure several teams from planning to waste could have utilised that money for their own purposes. So I'd like to say I would thank the officers for their time and I would apologise for how we screwed this up. I think although the budget has some sound ideas, morally it is bankrupt. You mentioned councillor Gosch, that we have a leading role in the special interest group. I wonder how the government will view this council spending £113,000 on allowances when we are going to them begging them for money. Thank you for the respect, members on the other side of the show, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Broton, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As town centre portfolio holder, I'd like to highlight the proposed fees for the coming year on Boston market, which can be found on page one-six-nine for any councillor who hasn't read the papers properly or simply couldn't find it. As an administration, Boston Independent, as councillor Ryder said, do listen to scrutiny committees, but more importantly, Boston Independent administration listen to our residents, businesses and traders, and that is why we have proposed that pitches are reduced. For the coming year, we're regular traders going from £22 to £15 and casual traders from £27 to £18, which will not only help our current hard-working traders but encourage new ones to join. As well as incentives currently on offer for our regular traders, we're also proposing a new incentive to new casuals that stand at least four times in a month and will receive their next two consecutive markets free of charge. Again, for any councillors who haven't read the papers, this is on page one-seven-one. I am, as are the Boston Independent administration, totally committed to improving our long-established market, and with other new initiatives throughout the year, Boston market is definitely going in the right direction as being one of the biggest markets in the county once again. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Broton. Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you and thank you councillor Broton for, you know, mentioning the traders. The traders are very happy to see the costs to be lower, so I can echo that one after talking to some traders last Wednesday. Okay, come back to our budget. Adjusting from table seven, the fees and charges income budget, and we have, I will just probably focus on the parking and the market. The last forecast budget was showing that the income from parking was like around £1,016,000 if I'm not mistaken, and I think the market was over £200,000. Okay, that's one thing. My concern here, if you go at page sixty-six and we go to the table seventeen, K risks, and if you look at the impact, it's almost ninety percent of the impact are on high. And I do understand why. I mean, our country is going through inflation is almost three percent, people, I mean, are struggling, you watch them on TV, you watch them everywhere, people are complaining about the way the life is going, and as I say, I will echo myself again, once again, I will support this council and I do understand that the next years will be even tougher because this new government, we don't know what their plans are until now. My question to you councillor Gosch, and if there are any shortfalls which will affect our future budgets, would you use our reserves to balance any deficits and would we have enough monies to cover this deficit?
Are there any more speakers? Councillor Gosch, do you wish to respond to that? Yeah, councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If everyone's spoken, I'll reserve my right to speak. I would like to commend councillor Gosch for his hard work with the budget. He's really brought an expert eye to the task, Madam Mayor, and he is vigilant, he's diligent, and he has got a real eye for detail, which I think has served this council well. I know he's worked extremely well with Christine Marshall, our section one-five-one officer, and I think you're a great example of a team who, when you get it right, you get it really right and it almost like Torvald and Dean. No, you have done extremely well and we are sorry to be losing you, Christine. And I'll say a little bit more about that later, with your permission, Madam Mayor. What I would like to say, just in closing, is that if any of the members opposite who feel so aggrieved at the decision taken by whole council on the allowances, is leave the money in the jar. Don't take it. Pick up the phone to HR and say, I don't want the allowance. Leave it there and then, at the end of the year, when the allowances are published, we'll all be able to see for ourselves who was a man or woman of their word. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dorian. Are there any further speakers on this item? Councillor Gosch, as the proposed, the recommendations, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Gleeson for your support. Indeed, we try our level best to keep a healthy reserve whilst not affecting the services despite financial hardships by working efficiently. Thank you councillor Rylet for your comment. Members allowance increase is a full council decision and I have to respect that. Thank you councillor Pryke for your comment and support. IDB is indeed a big issue and as a SIG member, we are trying to lobby hard along with other councils so the government do realise the issue. Till now, we don't know for this year how much our share is out of five million. Thank you councillor Cantwell for your comment, but I really want to know a question from my side, which part of the budget you don't support? Again, the answer is it's a full council decision regarding the member allowance, so as a portfolio holder, I have to implement that also in the budget. And regarding councillor Danny, thanks for your comment. I will get back to you with a written answer. But a quick answer is we have volatile reserve, we are in a safe position and we are in a safe position despite of financial hardships to give and provide the services to the residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You councillor Gosch. Thank you. We will now move to the vote. Where are we? I must have turned over too many pages. No? Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. This will be taken as a recorded vote. Democratic Services Officer will call your name and you should respond for, against or abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. I will proceed to read councillors' names in alphabetical order.
Councillor Alison Austin.
Four.
Councillor Richard Austin.
Four.
Councillor Baxter. Councillor Bedford. Councillor Brown.
Against.
Councillor Browton. Councillor Butler. Councillor Cantwell.
Against.
Councillor Cresswell. Councillor Danny. Councillor Dorian.
Four.
Councillor Drayton. Councillor Evans.
Against.
Councillor Gosch.
Four.
Councillor Gilbert. Councillor Gleeson. Councillor Isard.
Four.
Councillor Marson. Councillor Middleton. Councillor Mountain. Councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Pryke. Councillor Rylet.
Against.
Councillor Savakian. Councillor Scoot. Councillor Sharp. Councillor Staples. Councillor Welbury.
That item has been carried.
The third item on tonight's agenda is the council tax setting for twenty-five, twenty-six, which starts on page two-hundred-and-thirty-seven of the agenda. Can I again ask councillor Gosch to introduce this report? Thank you councillor Gosch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having now set this council budget, this further report on council settings brings together all of the precepting council elements. This enables the council to fulfil its obligations as billing authority in the manner specified by law and regulations. The band D charge for Boston of £223.65 is a fraction of the county council proposed band D of £1,625.85 and much less than the PCC charge of £318.15. I therefore propose this report and its recommendations for council approvals. Recommendations are the formal council tax resolutions for twenty-five, twenty-six as set out in appendix A and summarised in para four-point-one. That council approves that the charge to be levied on the council taxpayers of Boston for services provided in their town will be £769,057 for twenty-five, twenty-six. This equates to a band D equivalent charge of £81.09, a 0.90% increase. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second there? And if so, would you like to reserve the right to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to second about the council tax setting and reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will support the proposition because I think it's the laws we can do and I really, we can show some solidarity with our residents. It's good and, I mean, bear in mind, some other councils, they raise it to twenty percent, so I don't know where we're going to go from here, however, it's still low and hopefully everything will be all right. Thank you.
You councillor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will support this, but I do have concerns about the Police and Crime Commissioner's increase in council tax. To my mind, we have a police force that has now failed to peel reports, which are the equivalent of Ofsted reports for the police. I don't think the system is serving the people of Boston or the people of Lincolnshire well. I recognise that central government underfunds us. I recognise that in fact we've got to actually pass this increase because we need the police force, but in truth, we are being very poorly served by our people.
Thank you councillor Woodliffe. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree entirely with what councillor Gleeson has said. I've had to sit through ECP meetings, county hall. Now, actually, I did vote against, I was the only person to vote against the increase of £14. I couldn't see any purpose in asking residents to pay more money when they plan to cut to 200 offices and so on. There are other things going on which I can't really talk about in this public place, but I am very, very concerned about the situation with Lincolnshire Police and I don't think that the Police and Crime Commissioner has handled matters properly, but I can't say any more unfortunately. Okay? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Lord, if, any other speakers? Councillor Gosch, as the proposal, would you, the recommendations, would you like to sum up? Oh, sorry councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just before we depart the finances for good this evening, I want to take the opportunity with your good grace, Madam Mayor, to thank Christine Marshall for the sterling work, pardon upon, that she's done for this council. Christine, I have valued your wise counsel. I have really, really enjoyed the lessons in finance that you have given me. Very often, Madam Mayor, I have to say to Christine, talk to me as if I'm seven years old and explain that point over again, which she does very patiently with me because it's not a natural thing for me to be able to cope with this level of financial detail. So, from my own personal heart, thank you very much for the support you've given me, Christine, but in general to our team and our entire council, I think that you are an absolute treasure. And I don't mind sharing, when I went on a leadership course quite recently to Warwick University, I was sitting next to a councillor from Thorrock, to your point councillor Gleeson, they are a basket case financially, and I felt ever so smug with being able to say, we've got to Christine Marshall, we'll never end up where you are, such is the confidence that you inspire and your ability to do the job, to make everything add up and to deliver a balanced budget for us year on year. Thank you very much and you take with us our sincere good wishes.
Understood, Mayor. I would like to endorse everything councillor Dorian has said, Christine, as very sincere thanks from everyone at Boston. Councillor Gosch, as proposal, would you like to, the recommendations, would you now like to sum up?
Before that, I also want to thank Christine. You are really a good teacher, I must say. Despite my many, many questions all the time, you are very patient listening and answering that. Thank you once again. Thank you councillor Danny. Strangely, you supported the council tax increase but against the budget. I didn't understand that, but thank you anyways for your support. Yeah. And thank you councillor Gleeson and councillor Woodliffe for your support. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Medley would like to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, just to make it clear to members when they're voting tonight, there is a very slightly revised appendix A on your table and it is that document that you are voting on, not the one that was originally circulating in the pack, so I just want to make that absolutely clear, just so members are aware of that.
Thank you. We will now move to the vote. This is to be taken as a recorded vote. Democratic Services Officer will again call your name and you should respond for, against or abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. I will proceed to read councillors' names in alphabetical order. Councillor Ariambath. Councillor Alison Austin. Councillor Richard Austin.
Four.
Councillor Baxter. Councillor Bedford. Councillor Brown. Councillor Browton.
Four.
Councillor Butler. Councillor Cantwell. Councillor Cresswell. Councillor Danny. Councillor Dorian.
Four.
Councillor Drayton. Councillor Evans. Councillor Gosch. Councillor Gilbert. Councillor Gleeson. Councillor Isard. Councillor Marson. Councillor Middleton. Councillor Mountain. Councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Pryke. Councillor Rylet. Councillor Savakian. Councillor Scoot. Councillor Sharp. Councillor Staples. Councillor Welbury. Councillor Woodliffe.
That item has been carried.
That item has been carried.
Item number four, the pay policy statement 2025-26. The fourth item on tonight's agenda is the pay policy statement 2025-26, which starts on page 257 of the agenda. Can I ask councillor Dorian please to introduce this report? Thank you, councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the 2025-26 Pay Policy Statement to council for approval. Under Section 38 of the Localism Act 2011, a pay policy statement is required to be produced annually and must be approved by the council. This has been a requirement since 2012/2013. The statement must set out the authority's policy for the financial year relating to the remuneration of chief officers and the remuneration of the lowest paid employees, the relationship between chief officers' remuneration and that of the other officers. Note that the policy includes details of remuneration of the chief executive and chief officers across our partnership, and therefore includes those who are not directly employed by this council. The interim finance director has been appointed via a contract for services, so he's not actually employed by us and is not covered by this policy statement, but identifies the council is taking a decision to appoint as our Section 151 officer. The deputy chief executive pay band has been updated to reflect both the deputy chief executive and director posts sit in this band, noting that a few posts have been designated as director rather than deputy chief executive. A paragraph has been included to reference while Boston Borough Council don't currently offer any additional enhancements on termination of employment or bonuses to its employees or chief officers, that the council may explore those options around this if the need arises in order to retain skills and experience to ensure the continued proper running of the council in light of the local government reorganisation in Lincolnshire. If we did do anything like that, any proposals would go through the appropriate governance routes. The returning officer is listed by post title, and this change has already been approved by council but updated in the PPS. The pay policy statement, once approved, must be published on the council's website by the 31st of March this year. This report presents a pay policy statement for 2526, and I would like to move the recommendation, Madam Mayor, on page 257, that the policy be approved, and I'll look for a second. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Is there a second, and if so, would you like to reserve your right to speak?
I'd be the second, Madam Mayor, but don't want to reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Next item. Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just a simple question, because if we go to page 264, I would just like to know from our leader if the appointment of an interim financial director is already done, or is it on the way, or is it in the process, that's all. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'll just answer councillor Danny then, the only point to sum up. Yes, the appointment's been made. The Chief Officer Employment Panel met about three or four weeks ago now, and we appointed a chap called Brendan, but it's not him from Coach Trip. It's a different Brendan, I understand. So he's very nice, very accomplished.
Councillor Dorian. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour, against, and any abstentions? All for? Yeah. Any against? No abstentions? Okay, thank you. Right, the fifth item on tonight's agenda is a designation of Section 151 officer, which starts on page 275 of the agenda. Can I ask the chief executive to introduce this report, please? Thank you, Rob.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Following on from the news of Christine, moving on to pasters new and the question and answer that we've just had about the incoming finance director, a gentleman called Brendan Arnold. There's a requirement for the council to nominate an officer as its Section 151 officer, and the proposal is that that is the director of finance, Brendan Arnold, who's now joined us, and that will take effect to time with Christine's departure. So that will be the 31st of March. So just to read the recommendation for council certainty, and that is that Brendan Arnold, the council's incoming director of finance, is designated as the council's Section 151 officer with effect from the 31st of March 2025. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second, and if so, would you like to reserve the right to speak? Councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I'll propose that recommendation that was just spoken about by the chief executive, thank you, and I'll look for a second.
Are there any speakers on this item?
Yeah, I'll be the second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? No, thank you. Dorian, as a proposal of the recommendations, would you like to sum up? We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? No, thank you. Agenda is the appointment of returning officer, local returning officer and electoral registration officer, which starts on page 281 of the agenda. Again, can I ask the chief executive to introduce this report? Thank you, Rob.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. A very similar report this time, and I'm sure the leader may wish to say a few words. We note that our colleague John Leach, deputy chief executive, is also moving on to pastors new. And since September 2023, John has been our returning officer directing the electoral registration work and the local elections. We therefore need to appoint an individual from the leadership team who has both been experienced in running elections and also has a suitable exposure to training and guidance through the Electoral Commission. The recommendation identifies that Andy Fisher can be that individual. Andy currently sits on our senior leadership team. And again, I'll just read the recommendations out for members' clarity. There are two recommendations. The first is that Andy Fisher, the joint deputy chief executive and programme delivery and assistant director, general fund assets, be appointed the returning officer, including appointment as a local returning officer for the Boston Borough area for Greater Lincolnshire Combined County Authority mayoral elections and electoral registration officer to the council with immediate effect. And the second recommendation is that the council agrees to grant an indemnity to Andy Fisher for any personal liability arising from these appointments by the council. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Can I have a proposal for the recommendations, please, councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to propose the recommendation on page 281 as read out by the chief executive. And as he indicated, I'd also just like to take a moment, Madam Mayor, to commend John Leach and the sterling work he's done for our council. He's a remarkable man, is John. I think in another life, he could have been a priest, actually. He's very quiet and good. He's a good man, I think. I've never heard him swear. Quite remarkable when you work in local government. But he has taken the vision that was the Boston Independent Party's vision after the election, and he's helped to turn it into a reality. And I will be forever grateful to him for his commitment to the residents of Boston. And I think every job he does, he will always do to the absolute best of his ability. You never, ever, well, I never had to ask John for anything twice. It was always done. In fact, he was often ahead of me in knowing what I was going to need before I asked for it. So yeah, it's a shame he's going, it's a shame Christine's going, but they're both going on to bigger and better things. And that's got to be a good thing for those officers and their families, and I wish them well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian, for those kind words. I'm sure the whole council endorses what councillor Dorian has just said. He was indeed an exceptional man. Do we have a second, and would you like to reserve the right to speak, councillor Broadfin?
I'll be the second, Madam Mayor. Don't want to reserve my right to speak, but I would like to echo the sentiments of councillor Dorian in John Leach and Christine, and wish them both well in the future. Really good officers, who's, I've learnt a lot from both, so thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? No. Councillor Dorian, as a proposal of the recommendations, would you like to sum up? No, thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Against? No abstentions? Thank you, fully carried. The final item on tonight's agenda is the community governance review for the unparished area within the borough of Boston, which starts on page 285 of the agenda. Can I ask councillor Dorian please to introduce this report?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as promised at the last council meeting, we brought forward this report asking councils to consider whether it wishes now to commence a community governance review for the unparished areas in the borough of Boston. And it sets out the proposed arrangements for the review. The proposed terms of reference for the community governance review are attached to Appendix 1. And further details of the process are set out in the report, excuse me. To oversee the development of the review, it suggested that a working group be set up consisting of five members from the Boston Town Area Committee and relevant officers to support the work. The working group will consider the responses received during the two consultation stages of the review and then present draft proposals and final recommendations to this full council for determination at a later date. Finally, the report proposes that an initial allocation of finance be made available to support delivery of the review and that a general delegation be granted to the chief executive to undertake steps to progress the review in a timely manner. Specifically, Madam Mayor, the recommendations on page 285, we ask that council approve the terms of reference attached to Appendix 1 for publication and a stage one consultation. We ask that the council appoints five members from the BTAC Committee to a community governance review working group and to consider the responses received during the two consultation stages of the review and to present draft proposals and final recommendations for determination. And I would like to also recommend that the five elected members who should sit on that working group would be myself, councillor Pierpoint, councillor Cresswell, councillor Gilbert and councillor Gleeson. That's my proposal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second, and would you like to reserve the right to speak later?
I'll be the second again, Madam Mayor, but don't want to reserve my right.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Cantwell and councillor Woodliffe and councillor Gilbert. So councillor Cantwell first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very quickly for me, I'm glad to see that we specified this will happen in a timely manner. I think it's important we act as quickly as possible to protect this town's assets. And we do not want asset stripping to a distant unitary authority when the buildings, the heritage by rights belongs to the people of Boston Town, and that should be preserved at all costs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Woodliffe, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the leader first of all for bringing this forward. I'm very pleased to see this here, and things are beginning to move. We may well have to move very, very quickly with this. We don't know what the government's plans really are. The government knows either, actually. But, so, I'll probably get shot for that. But anyway. However, I'm very, very pleased with it, and I wish it well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gilbert, thank you.
Add my support to this. I'm really keen and very pleased to be invited to join this community governance review of the unparished area of Boston, of BTAC, basically. It's an important national, international centre of history, Boston, and it's very culturally significant, both nationally and internationally. And we need to ensure its long-term, unique identity is maintained. I think this group is going to achieve that. There's not a great deal of reference in the terms of reference to assets, but I'm very reassured to know that as part of Recommendation 3, delegated powers will enable us to give a full consideration to the assets of the borough, which may be then transferred across to any new town council that may be suggested or proposed. So thank you very much indeed, and I'll support this.
Thank you, councillor Gilbert. Councillor Alison Austin.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm very happy to support this. I'm actually a councillor who represents one of these BTAC wards, unparished. And I don't actually live in it, but I live very, very close to it. So I'm very, very happy. I think this is the right way to be going forward. For too long, we, or BTAC, has just been a committee of the council. And I think now it's giving it a bit better status. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin. No, any further speakers? No. And councillor Dorian, as a proposal of the recommendations, would you like to sum up?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor, thank you. I would like to thank the members opposite for their support. We don't often agree, councillor Cantwell, but I'm happy to acknowledge when we do that I share your views, that I wish to protect the assets that belong to the people of Boston and would be very, very wary of any unitary authority coming along and asset stripping. The beautiful regalia we have in the cabinet, that's so well looked after by Andy Lamming, belongs to the people of Boston. The very chins you are wearing, Madam Mayor, and your title belong to the people of Boston. And I think one of the things that we do really well is our mayorality and the fact that no one group hogs that title for themselves, that anyone can become the mayor as long as they are the longest-serving councillor. And you don't get the chance to be the mayor four, five, six times as in other towns. So all that needs to be preserved, and that is what the working group will set out to do. So thank you very much to my colleagues opposite for agreeing to join that group. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You, councillor Dorian. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? No, thank you. We will now move on to part three of the agenda, and we have one motion on notice. The motion shall only be moved by the proposer and the seconder by whom notice has been given. Where notice of the motion has been given for any meeting, and it shall not be moved and seconded by the proposer and seconder, it shall, unless postponed, be by the consent of the meeting, be treated as withdrawn and shall not be moved without fresh notice. Can I ask councillor Rylotte to introduce the motion? Thank you, councillor Rylotte.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Boston Borough is currently faced with the threat of multiple national significant infrastructure projects, which if granted, would remove colossal swathes of land from crop production. Whilst these projects are described being temporary in nature, their 40-year presence is a significant part of anyone's lifetime. Pilems have a lifespan of approximately 80 years, but their presence is likely to be indefinite along with that of the associated substations. Land in Boston Borough is classified as the best and most versatile land in the country, something that should not be understated. Whilst delivering clean energy is crucial to supporting the UK's net zero target, there is very real threat to the future of our farmers and home, there is, sorry, there is a real threat to the future of our farmers and homegrown produce. This concerns me greatly as it This concerns me greatly, as it does many residents who have contacted me expressing their concerns. Greater Lincolnshire is the breadbasket of the country, providing 30% of the nation's vegetables, 20% of sugar beet, 18% of poultry, and 12% of all food. According to the United Kingdom Food Security Report 2021, in 2020, the UK imported 46% of the food it consumed. If we are forced to import increasing amounts of food and crops to support ourselves as a nation, we risk becoming victims of price dictatorship and increasing supply issues. Whilst overall I support the concept of green energy, this should not be at the cost of our future food security. We have an ever-increasing population. If our farmland stocks are depleted, any green energy savings would be offset by the carbon footprint of importing additional food to provide for our nation, as well as the cost of importing and replacing the solar panels themselves, which is required every 15 to 20 years. The recent war in Ukraine has further demonstrated the need for better food security, which should be a priority. I will give a very brief overview of NSIPs we are currently faced with in Boston Borough. The Ozone Wind Project, which would be one of the largest floating wind turbine developments globally, located off the east coast of Scotland, this also intends to connect via underground cabling to the proposed new Western Marsh Substation. The Attadazzing Offshore Wind Project, 33 miles off the Lincolnshire coast, connecting via underground cabling to another new 35-acre substation at Surfleet Marsh. Great Grid Upgrade, Grimsby to Walpole, an 87-mile-long pylon network consisting of overhead cabling with 50-meter-tall pylons along the entire route. Finally, Eastern Green Link 3 and 4, offshore cabling from Scotland, coming onshore in North Lincolnshire, connecting to another new substation at Walpole. Solar impact of any of these projects would be enormous. The cumulative impact, nothing less than catastrophic. In addition to this, there are several solar developments proposed and several operational across the district. 2023, we saw planning past Bickerfenn Solar Farm, taking away 97 acre hectares of farmland. This is not about nimbyism. It's about the impact it would have on us, not only as a district, but also a country. Removing ginormous swathes of our most productive agricultural land and caving it in solar panels, pylons, wind turbines, battery storage and substations at the expense of our nation's food security is, in my opinion, short-sighted, ruthless and irresponsible. We, as a community, are custodians of Boston Borough. We need to ensure that we do everything within our power to protect and improve our district for our past, present and future residents, and it is the government's responsibility to listen to local communities, who know their area and its value, and who are warning Whitehall of the repercussions if these proposals are not taken seriously. It is crucial that, as a local authority, Boston Borough Council present a united front to make our stance on NSIPs clear to the Labour Government, who seem to be holding us hostage on the generation of greener energy at it would seem any cost, and who appear hell-bent on destroying our countryside, our beautiful, unique Fenland landscape, our residents' lifestyle, physical and mental health, our infrastructure, our wildlife, our economy, our employment, of which approximately 29% of jobs in Boston Borough are directly linked to the agri-food chain, our heritage and our nation's food security. I would like to move my motion as detailed in the agenda and welcome a seconder.
Councillor Evans, a second. Would you like to reserve the right to speak?
I'm happy to second this motion, Madam Mayor, and reserve my right to speak.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome this motion and I, speaker's portfolio holder for planning. Before we discuss this, I was going to mention, obviously, this has gone to the monitoring officer. Perhaps then, because many of us are members of the Planning Committee, and we might be tempted not to say anything, thinking we might be involved in a planning application. Can I just ask the monitoring officer, please, what would be your opinion? Because this is just a general motion, not specific. So I thought probably it would stop some committee members from maybe commenting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the question, councillor Baxter. This is a general motion, and I think as long as committee members do not start to talk about particular planning applications that might come before the committee, you're safe to talk in the general terms of what this motion is looking to do. The motion itself isn't changing any council policy. It's not changing any national policy. And so those of you on the Planning Committee, when applications come forth, will have to consider those with an open mind and determine them in accordance with those policies that exist. Thank you.
Baxter.
It's me again. Yeah, I welcome this motion. In fact, I remember in October 2024, this verbatim was put before South Holland District Council. Actually, you only got in just before me, councillor Ryalot. I was ready to do this in partnership with councillor Cantwell. So I appreciate what you're saying, and what I wanted to mention was the fact that many of these projects are permitted development. As you mentioned, this was raised by central government and their permitted development. But I can assure you, as a council, we've lobbied under every available opportunity, spoken to the people who've come along to consult with people. Of particular interest, I know Bickerfenn has had many different projects. I would hope, in fact, I know, as a council, we've tried, well, we've always consulted with our ward, with our residents. Obviously, those of us that live around here appreciate our land. Many of us have worked on the land, and we appreciate the things that you comment about. So from a positive point of view, I'm not too sure if you're aware, I did let you all know we have appointed an NSP project manager who is responsible throughout the partnership at looking at these projects. As a portfolio holder, I've given you some details and tried to keep you up to date, especially when it comes to Bickerfenn through councillor Brown and councillor Cantwell. And as members, we often attend events. There's going to be one in Swine's Head soon. And also, because it involves Swine's Head, then we've consulted the people there. Just to mention as well, we are open and transparent. Our assistant director, Phil Norman, has made a decision that instead of a planning authority making decisions, well, for example, the three Bicker planning applications, they weren't, well, I think councillor Cantwell called in one, but it's a decision has been made that these will be put before the Planning Committee, not decided by a planning officer through the LPA. So that is being open and transparent. And as ward members and planning committee members, we can obviously express our point of view. So I was pleased to see, well, it mentions we reaffirm our commitment. I would hope that you agree that us, as a council, have already committed to putting our cards on the table and becoming involved in consultation. So I support this motion, but I would like to highlight it's not something new. For a few months now, we have already been considering that. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Any further speakers? Councillor Gilbert.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's very reassuring to hear the contribution just made by councillor Baxter. It's very good to know that as a council, we stand up for our local communities and our local businesses. But I fear for the future of local democracy. I mean, who knows where influence will lie once a model of unitary authority is visited upon us in the next few years, and that is of concern. That said, whilst we exist as a borough council, we do have a public duty to stand up for our economy, our agricultural workforce and our town, villages and communities. There's so much evidence that when Westminster governments do what they believe is right, decisions are made which adversely impact on communities, both here and elsewhere, or they have an unforeseen but devastating cumulative effect on communities a few years down the line. Governments are very bad at predicting the future beyond the next general election. In my opinion, this is a case with the attitude of central government towards rural communities, landscapes and farming, three issues which this motion seeks to address via collaborative working and lobbying. With motions such as this one, we can at least try and turn the tide against Westminster's top-down indifference to the effects of national policy on local economies and communities. Governments, especially this one, prioritise renewable energy and energy transmission via pylons. The other priority is volume home building, the fabled 1.5 million homes within the next five years, just prior to the next general election. Both policies have the capability to blight our country generally and our landscape and food production economy specifically, yet both meet central government priorities. So I'm sure they will attempt to deliver them at pace and at scale, to quote the government's own management jargon. It's an odd situation that the UK, it's an odd situation that in the UK, and then thus I'm wrong, mistaken, we do not have a food security policy. We may have had a report, but I don't think we've actually got a food security policy. Yet we have policies for just about everything else. We've even a wealth security policy through the Financial Services Guarantee Scheme. Money in Britain is seen as more important than food, and food is seen as less important than housing and renewable energy. All are important. By far, food is the most important of them all and has no security policy. So as a local council, we should promote democracy, consultation, rural protection, collaboration, sustainability and food security, even in the face of a government with little obvious interest in promoting these things themselves. I fully support this motion and encourage everybody else to do so, and thank the proposer and the seconder for putting it forward as counsel. Thank you.
You, councillor Gilbert. I think councillor Gleeson and then possibly councillor Cantwell and councillor Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to speak. I'm only going to get into trouble. I know the Tories are running scared of reform, and they want to give that illusion that they actually care. They don't. Just look at the last eight years they ruled this town. Yeah, they're giving this illusion. This proposal, I'm actually going to vote for it because it actually does nothing. All it is, is we like Christmas. You know, we think it's a good idea. It doesn't achieve anything. It doesn't address the issue that we don't get any money from the rates of all these things going across our area. It doesn't, would actually would help the borough, rather than it going into other districts. You know, we should be lobbying government to make sure that the rate or value attributable to these infrastructure is apportioned fairly across the county. That would be much more useful than this, well, I don't know, apple pie, I suppose. Yeah. Oh, well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. I think councillor Cantwell, then councillor Butler, then councillor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a local ward member, along with councillor Brown for Bicker, it has been truly troubling to see the monster that Bickerfenn has developed into, and the monster that I fear Surfleet Marsh will turn into, and the monster that pylons will turn into. These applications have all come in largely since myself and councillor Brown were elected in May 2023, certainly exasperated by the Labour Government's policies on it as well. Although you can't forget that the push for net zero was began by the Conservative Government. So I think there's this fair share of blame to go around nationally as well. Councillor's Gleeson argument that we don't care is frankly disgusting, ridiculous and stupid. But that's what you can expect. So I'm very happy to support this motion, Madam Mayor, and I will be happy to share councillor Gleeson's comments with the residents of the Bickerfenn Action Group, who are now fighting against these applications, from the residents of various other projects, residents of various other areas who are fighting against these applications, because they clearly care, councillor Gleeson.
I think we have councillor Butler next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As ward member for a rural ward, Aldley Comrango, I fully support this. We need to do everything we can to protect our rural communities, our way of life and our aesthetics of where we live. I think it's wrong in a lot of cases, especially with the pylons. I think they're being forced upon us. I agree, we need to do more with our own energy security, as councillor Ryalot alluded to, obviously with what's going on in Ukraine and Mr Putin and everything at the moment. It is very worrying. We don't know what's going to happen in the next 12 months, and quite rightly so. We need to protect our own food reliability. So yeah, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Butler. Councillor Danny, what did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to highlight some few things, which is, I think, the the impact of these pylons on the communities and the landscape. I mean, they do pose a health risk, and everybody recognises that. There is a pollution with that. There is a noise from the cables. You can hear it. It can vibrate. It can damage the wildlife, because birds can be, you know, electrified if they're flying, and it produces electromagnetic fields. So these dangers are there. It will impact the environment. There is a visual impact as well. They are sore eye, you know, to look at. They're so huge, and they're there in front of you. So however, this government and the health security say that there is no evidence, and WHO as well, which is the International Health Organisation, say there is no evidence of harm. However, I will support this motion, and I think we should all work for a better place to live in, especially Lincolnshire. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Danny. Councillor Woodlift, I think.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I have nothing against this big motion. Fine, but I would caution about concern about pylons. I think it's 1937, there was a decision to institute the national grid across the country, and there were huge objections to it. But of course, what followed in 1939 and beyond bent that those pylons actually saved this country because of distribution of electricity around the country. If it hadn't had the pylons in place, we might not have been able to win the war. The war was won essentially because we were able to transfer the production of Spitfires and elsewhere across the country. The pylons were essential to that. So I understand how people feel about the aesthetics of pylons. But there is a national issue here. We need to make sure that we don't throw out the necessary aspects of life, however unpopular they are, simply because we don't like high pylons and the rest of it. I don't like high pylons either, but there is a national issue here. We're entering very uncertain times. We do not know what's going to happen internationally. We do not know what's going to happen. So we need to bear all these things in mind when we're considering electrical transmission, because it may become fundamentally important for survival of our country. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are there any more speakers on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not only the fact that the pylons are unsightly, but those that are there at the moment, we see the impact that they have on the field that they're growing in, I'm sorry that they're standing in. I looked at one not very far from us as I was driving the other day, and they've recently been renovating it. But the amount of the field that's been devastated as a result, it's, that bit of land won't grow a crop for a year or two at this rate. It may have been heavy land, but it's, well, it's appalling now. So not only have we got where there are existing pylons, that they in fact do reduce the amount of a field that can be cultivated. So no more pylons, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Austin. Are there any more speakers? Councillor Ryalot, as a proposer of this motion, would you like to sum up?
You.
We'll now move to the vote. All those in We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. And no one against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That concludes the formal business of this meeting this evening. I thank you all for your attendance. Thank you.